Thanks Peggy. Okay, I'd like to call to order the City Council Regular Business Meeting for Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. With us this evening, we have our city attorney, James Heaney, our city manager, Blair King, and we have Peggy, our deputy city clerk, Ben helping us with IT. Peggy, would you please call the roll?
Please state for the record if you're present after I call your name. Mayor Matthews.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quetzlin.
Present.
Councilmember Deeds.
Present.
Councilmember Morawaki.
Present.
Councilmember Schneider.
Present.
Councilmember Roy Johnson.
Present.
And Councilmember Hetaopoulos is not with us this evening. And now let's say the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, I'd like to read the Suquamish land acknowledgement. Suquamish had a very big loss today. They lost one of their elders and a matriarch of the tribe. So they won't be with us this evening to accept the proclamation for missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls. And so I wanted to read this in special thoughts of them tonight. "Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event in days long vanished." Chief Seattle, 1854. "We would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is within the ancestral territory of the Suquam people of clear saltwater, Suquamish people. Expert fishermen, canoe builders, and basket weavers, the Suquam live in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington's central Salish Sea as they have for thousands of years. Here, the Suquam live and protect the lands and waters of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855." Okay, and now we'll move on to Councilmember Morawaki.
Thank you, Mayor. I move approval tonight's regular business meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Morawaki, seconded by Deputy Mayor Quetzlin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've approved our agenda. Are there any conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. And we have a few this evening. We're starting with our, oh, my favorite pup today. Don't tell mine, a proclamation recognizing National Therapy Animal Day. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I read this proclamation, I just need to share that when I was in junior high, my dream when I wanted to grow up, what I did want to grow up, my dream when I grew up was to be a guide dog trainer. And then a house that I lived in not that long ago, only 10 years or so, is now the next door neighbor to the Assistance Dogs Northwest. So I feel like it's kind of coming around. Yes. "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, recognizing April 30th, 2025 as National Therapy Animal Day. Whereas there are thousands of pet partner therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, and whereas Pet Partners has designated April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas scientific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system, and whereas therapy animal teams in the City of Bainbridge Island play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the human-animal bond, and whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end-of-life, and whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need, and whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming pet partners, volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits, now therefore, on behalf of Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the City of Bainbridge Island, and on behalf of City Council, I do hereby recognize April 30th, 2025, as National Therapy Animal Day in the City of Bainbridge Island, and encourage our residents to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers. Further, we publicly salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and in communities across the nation." There's a motion that I'll... I move to authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation recognizing National Therapy Animal Day and to add this proclamation to the list of annual proclamations that may be signed without further council action.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Schneider, seconded by Councilmember Morawaki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that motion passes.
Yeah. And accepting this is Bill Johnson and his dog, Remy.
Well, thank you for the proclamation and recognizing the value of a therapy dog. I started my journey in 2019, right before COVID, and I didn't realize that he was going to be our therapy dog at our house. But then, 2022, I got permission from St. Michael's to volunteer for them. And I've been doing that. Once a week, I'll be doing it tomorrow morning. So it's really a pleasure to be here and people enjoy, you know, I think everybody, not everybody, but many people have pets and you know how it is. But this is my special pet. So thank you very much. Okay? Appreciate it.
Now, I'm going to present the proclamation declaring May 2025 as Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Awareness Month. As I said before, the Suquamish tribe will, Joey, Danita, I believe it was a couple members of their council, won't be here this evening because they lost the eldest living patriarch, I said matriarch by accident before, their oldest living male elder. So thinking of the Suquamish tribe this evening. "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, proclaiming May 2025 as Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Awareness Month. Whereas the City of Bainbridge Island joins a growing chorus of local, state, tribal, and national governments in support, supporting awareness for missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls. And whereas Indigenous women and girls go missing or are murdered at disproportionately high rates in the United States, according to the Urban Indian Health Institute, homicide is the third leading cause of death among Indigenous women, and Indigenous women face rates of violence up to 10 times higher than the national average. And whereas, reasons for the lack of quality data, quality data about missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls include underreporting, racial misclassification, poor relationships between law enforcement and American Indian and Alaska Native communities, poor record-keeping protocols, institutional racism in the media, and lack of substantive relationships between journalists and American Indian and Alaska Native communities. And whereas, a 2018 study found that the Seattle, that Seattle is the city with the highest case number of missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls, and Washington State is the second highest case number. And whereas, the disappearances and murders of Indigenous women and girls is directly connected to domestic and other forms of violence, sexual assault, trafficking, and a history of childhood intergenerational and historic trauma. And whereas, the City of Bainbridge Island urges islanders to show solidarity, support, and to continue to raise awareness about the need to address systemic obstacles that contribute to the occurrence of missing and murdered Indigenous women and girls. Now therefore, I, Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the City of Bainbridge Island, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to join in this subsurface." Thank you. Okay, and I will present this to them when I see the next. Okay. Presenting a proclamation recognizing Asian, May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Councilmember Morawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews. "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, declaring the month of May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas, the national celebration of Asian heritage began as a week-long commemoration in 1979, and became a month-long commemoration in 1992. May was chosen, May was chosen to recognize the immigration of the first Japanese immigrants to the United States in May 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the transcontinental railroad laid by a majority of Chinese immigrants in May of 1869. And whereas, Asian-Pacific identity encompasses all 48 countries of the Asian continent, and the 24 Pacific Islands of Malaysia, Micronesia, and Polynesia. And whereas, Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander, AANHPI Heritage Month, is observed in the United States to recognize the numerous contributions made by the AANHPI people to the history, culture, and achievements of our nation. And whereas, AANHPI people have lived and worked in Washington since before its statehood, and play a large part in the heritage of the City of Bainbridge Island, and whereas, AANHPI people continue to make significant contributions to the cultural and economic fabric of our nation and city with resilience and strength despite past and present barriers to safety and inclusion. And whereas, the City of Bainbridge Island honors the irreplaceable legacy of our AANHPI communities that strengthen our island today and into the future, and whereas, we hope residents of Bainbridge Island seek out the multitudes of Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander engagement opportunities throughout the year, including Bainbridge Island's second Asian Arts and Heritage Festival this month. Now therefore, on behalf of Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the City of Bainbridge Island, and behalf of my colleagues on the City Council, do hereby declare the month of May 2025 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Bainbridge Island, and encourage all residents to join us in paying tribute to the generations of AANHPI people who have enriched our history and are instrumental to our future. And accepting this proclamation will be Stephanie Reese, the founder of the Asian Arts and Heritage Festival, and I suspect there's other folks here as well.
I'm a little weepy, and I had a whole plan of something I was going to say, but this moment and all these people, we've come so far in one year. Last year, when we did this, we had a few friends. And City Council, thank you so much. I hope that you can recognize the importance of this festival and this month to all of us here that I'm speaking for. I wanted to say that we created this festival as a unique way to celebrate AANHPI Month, and we are so excited to say that our theme of inclusivity and participation is shown in the numbers of people who are participating in the festival. We have 250 volunteers, performers, and participants that are doing this festival. And last year, we had four events. This year, we have 18 events across the island, which is all about these people that you see right here, who are leaders and visionaries. We had our first-ever Korean Heritage Night. We have our first-ever Melanesian Heritage Night, which will be the first in the United States, run by Mary. And I'd love to tell you about all the events, but guess what? It's not about the events. It's about the people, and the community, and the connections that we have all made with one another, and the friendships. I want to speak on one word that my friend Mark, who is our new president of our board for our Filipino community, is the word bayanihan, which in Filipino it means about helping one another to uplift the whole. And that is what this is all about. It's about every single person here, all the hours and hours and hours of dedication and love and commitment to community and to diversity and to culture. And we are just so proud that we stand together. We always say yes to everyone. We include everyone. I've heard so many stories from our youth, from our elders in our community, and I'm just so proud that I can speak for people here and give people a voice. And in this time that we live in, when so many festivals and celebrations, cultural celebrations, have been canceled due to fear, we here on Bainbridge Island, the unique thing about us here on Bainbridge Island is past, present, and future is that we do not give in to fear. We show up for one another, and we can protest with joy and with celebration. So I will see you all at our festival events, and especially on May 31st. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Bayanihan. Next, we have our Memorial Day proclamation, and that is Councilmember Deeds.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes. "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, recognizing Memorial Day on May 26, 2025. Whereas, Memorial Day is designated as an annual day of remembrance to honor though all those who have died in service to the United States during peace and war. And whereas, we remember the men and women from all corners of the United States and the service personnel from our own community who have sacrificed their lives to maintain our security and the liberties we hold dear. And whereas, you can count, you can honor the fallen by attending memorial services, laying wreaths and flowers, and planting flags on graves, educating children about the importance of the day, or observing the moment of silence at 3:00 PM on Memorial Day to reflect on those who have made the ultimate sacrifice to our state and nation. And whereas, we are thankful that we are rich in civic organizations such as the American Legion Cullin Hyde Post 172, who will conduct a Memorial Day observance at the Bainbridge High, Bainbridge High School Veterans Memorial Monument, May 26, 2025, at 11:30 AM, and at the Budhawk Memorial Park, American Legion Hall, Northeast Buckland Hill Road, at 12:30 PM, with scout troops 1564 and 1804 and guests. Now, therefore, I, on behalf of Ashley Matthews, Mayor of City Bainbridge Island, behalf of the City Council, do hereby recognize May 26, 2025, as Memorial Day in the City of Bainbridge Island. And we ask all community members to remember those who have died in service to the United States. And accepting this is Gary Sakuma, Commander, American Legion, Cullin Hyde Post 172.
So I'm still the commander here for 10 years at the Cullin Hyde Post 172. It's very interesting because actually, September 24, or I'm sorry, May 24, we put out over 1,000 flags at four cemeteries, Kane, Seabold, Fort Blakely, and Hillcrest, and at two columbariums, Bethany Lutheran and St. Barnabas Church. And these all recognize, of course, and honor and remembrance of our servicemen that have died for this country. And so then, two days later, 26 is Memorial Day, and we have a Bainbridge Island High School Memorial Monument. And on the back of that are two plaques that are embossed with Bainbridge Islanders who actually fought in war, starting with World War I, II, Korean War, Vietnam, and the Gulf Wars. And so their names are on those plaques. It's interesting because to be on that plaque, they had to have lived on the island. And so it was a sacrifice that they made. And then, of course, we have three Medal of Honor winners, MOH, that are recognized. And that, the first one is Budhawk. And then we have another one that was during the same period of time, World War II, in the Pacific area. And then the most recent one is Captain Swenson that was in Afghanistan. So it's pretty, it's the highest military award given, and we honor those people. So we have two ceremonies, again, one at the high school, and that starts at 11:30. And then the second one is at the Bughead Hawk Memorial Park, which is at the Legion Hall. And so we invite everyone to come and also visit our Legion Hall, which is pretty historical. And so we have docents that will tell you a little bit about those things. So again, thank you, Madam Mayor and the Council for doing this, because this becomes sometimes, I think, a laborious thing, because we don't change this proclamation very much, because the only things we change are actually the last paragraph, which changes the date and time of the ceremony and observance. And the rest of it is, of course, history, and it's been done by congressional action, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll present proclamation declaring May 18 through 24 as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Mayor. "A proclamation by the City Council of the City of Bainbridge Island, Washington, declaring May 18 through May 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Bainbridge Island. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, quality of life, and the well-being of Bainbridge Island residents. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents and civic leaders in the City of Bainbridge Island to gain knowledge of, and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas, the theme of this year's National Public Works Week is people, purpose, presence, which highlights three cornerstone ideals that motivate public works professionals to serve in their communities every day. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Ashley Matthews, Mayor of the City of Bainbridge Island, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 18 through, May 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week in the City of Bainbridge Island, and invite all residents to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the contributions they make every day towards the health, safety, and quality of life of our community." I'll be presenting this to our public works director, Chris. Where's Vicky?
Good evening, Council. I'd like to open my brief comments this evening with a quote from a great author, Michael Lewis. He has a new book out called Who Is Government? And I have yet to read it, but I have read some of his other books, and I know it's probably very good. I've been told, it's been recommended to me a couple times now. I've read his other book, Fifth Risk, which is also a really, really great book. The quote from this book goes, "For public servants, it is a calling. They do not need other motivations when what they do is the right thing to do." "We need to honor these people. We would tease more out of the population if we created a culture of recognition around what it means to embrace shared responsibility. Thank you for honoring us tonight, your public work staff. We are burdened with responsibility of supporting this community's present and preparing for its future. And we do so with the best of intentions, with the best of our ability, and often with limited resources. Thank you for sharing that responsibility with us. On behalf of the 50-plus employees of the City of Bainbridge Island Public Works Engineering and Operations and Maintenance Division, I wish you all a happy and safe Public Works Week. Thank you."
Thank you. And now we're going to receive a presentation from our City Employee Wellness Committee on the city's participation in the Association of Washington Cities Well City Program.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce you to Associate Planner Joanne Mendenhall, who is going to make some remarks. And again, this is our participation in Association of Washington Cities Well City Program, and something that, for those of you that will be attending the AWC conference, will be hearing more about.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Mayor Matthews and City Council Members for allowing us to give you a very brief overview of our wellness program here at the city. As our City Manager mentioned, I am Joanne Mendenhall. I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning and Community Development Department. With me, I am joined by Nicole Ratana, Brenda Landalt, Jennifer Smith, Albre Bonvino, Eric Haska, and unfortunately, Kristy Shipman, and Tracy Overturf was not able to join us this evening, but they are also part of our committee. I believe we have a presentation? So our program was started in 1987. There are a number of reasons why an employer might start a wellness program that benefits for things like employee retention, increased productivity. In the case of this particular program, it was implemented as a way to lower healthcare costs for Washington cities and their employees. Next slide, please. The program goal is to support physical and mental health of our team members. We do this by promoting activities throughout the year that meet the program's values of choice, health, and service. Next slide, please. Bainbridge Island is recognized as a well city. You may have seen the plaque. And in order to maintain and reach this status, there's a number of criteria, but primarily, we need to prove that at least 50% of our team members are participating in this program. And as a benefit to that, we get a 2% reduction to our medical premiums. That might seem like a tiny number, but it is a mighty number. 2024, we had over 60% of our employees participate, and we saved over $47,000 in medical premium costs. And over the last 10 years, we've saved over $400,000 in medical premium costs. And over the last ten years, we've saved over four hundred thousand dollars in medical premium costs. So if that's not enough. For this program, the Wellness Committee, all of these wonderful people behind me, help organize a range of activities under the program's values of choice, health, and service. Under service, we do a lot of community outreach. We do things like toy drives, food drives. We've also really pushed hard the last couple of years integrating with other city committees and initiatives for things, to do things like Shop with a Cop or working with our Green Team for our Bike to Work Day. Next slide, please. Under the value of choice, we have a lot of education and awareness activities, things like asking our team members to participate in sleep tracking and a benefits fair. So everybody is aware of all the benefits they have as a employee of the City of Bainbridge Island. Next slide, please. And under health, we have activities that encourage healthy habits and lifestyle choices, things like our heart-healthy cook-off, our walking challenge, our brain games, lots of, lots of fun ways to participate with our program. And that is a quick overview of our wellness program. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Joanne. And thank you, everyone, so much. Thank you. All right, we are on to public comment. So great to see you, Albre. And Steve Dimo, Dimo, Dimo. Steve.
Hello, good evening. Steve Dimmick, twenty-five-year resident of Bainbridge Island. Also, a career, twenty-five-plus years in affordable housing. And in full disclosure, as Blair knows, we're, my firm was one of the applicants for the police station site. But so this is not sour grapes, I assure you. What, I just wanted to raise some concerns to you guys. So I looked at the development agreement that's proposed, and what I, what really stood out to me was, was close to twelve million dollars in soft debt, which in my, my world means you've, you're going to need to apply for a lot of grant money, which the strings attached to that grant money typically are very low-income A M I commitments. And and if that's what we want, great. I just want everyone's eyes to be open to that. You know, I think as we went through the process, my firm, I think it was kind of, it seemed like the, the goal was more workforce housing, which in our world is kind of sixty percent of median. You know, what I'm talking about, if you get a lot of soft debt, typically, they want thirty percent commitments. And that's a very different project, very different, you know, rents, very different incomes, you know, to the point where I don't think the people, the clerks at T and C would qualify. They'd be overqualified. So what I, what I want everyone to be aware of is, you know, if you move forward with that, great, and I think it's very noble of our island to, you know, provide that kind of housing. But, I mean, what I've heard over and over is we want workforce housing. This, you know, it's, that's not going to be workforce housing. So I don't know if, and I just wanted to make you aware, there was a, in twenty twenty-three, there was a case in Kenmore, Washington. Another nonprofit proposed hundred units of affordable housing. I think the whole community thought it was workforce housing. And in the end, they, they learned that it was very low, very low-rent housing. And there was a huge backlash, and it was a lot of turmoil made the news. Ultimately, the city declined the whole project after many years of work and so anyway, I just, I want us to avoid that, and, and I think if we proceed this way, just be super transparent with the community on, on kind of what the goals are, what's being delivered. Okay. And I will tell you, we've applied for other RFPs in other cities, and what they've required is like a matrix of rent, unit types, and AMIs. I mean, if you're going to give land, you're going to give three million dollars. I think we should be very specific what we want, what we expect. So anyway, that's my advice. Appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. I think that's it. Is there anyone who wants to speak who's not signed up? No, and we don't have anyone online? Okay, with that, public comment is closed. And on to item five, Consent Agenda. Councilmember Murawaki.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda and pull five E for after the
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Deputy Mayor Quetzaln. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I'll speak to that.
Okay, and now we'll go to agenda, or sorry, five E, Councilmember Murawaki.
Yeah, this has to do with the Japanese-American Exclusion Memorial, something that's been going on a couple of decades in my life. This is really exciting, because this is the going-to-be done lynchpin that allows that project to actually build the visitor center, and they've been working in conjunction with the city. It's been a long process, and it's been frustrating for both parties, but I'm glad to see it actually happen. Good things come to those who wait. I hope this will be done in time so that there's actual survivor that'll be there to cut the ribbon for us. So I will move to authorize the city manager to execute a construction contract with Nordland Construction Northwest, Inc., for seven hundred and forty-six thousand, oops. Yeah, 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 right. Four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-two cents to support the Japanese-American Exclusion Memorial Waterline Project.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Councilmember Murawaki, seconded by Deputy Mayor Quetzaln. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. And Councilmember Murawaki, thank you so much for all of your work on that. Okay, now we are on to, oh, I skipped the whole agenda and went to communications. We are on our City Manager Council announcements. Councilmember Murawaki.
Yeah, just a couple of things happened on May fifth, Cinco de Mayo. Artemis Technologies, they are working on a single-point pontoon craft that will be a hundred and fifty passenger thing by Kitsap Transit. They had their prototype vehicle here. They did it here in Kitsap County on the fifth, and then other places in Seattle. And so to tell you guys, this, this thing is astonishing. It's all electric. It runs on a single pontoon, and as it rises out of the water, the wake just disappears. And so going through rich passage with virtually zero wake at twenty-five knots is a real game changer. Plus, it's electric. So it's a just, you know, just a really exciting project, I think. This last week, this weekend, I went to the cultural event at the Filipino-American Community Hall, part of the Asian Heritage Festival that we've all been talking about. And Wednesday, many of us were there for our volunteer appreciation event that was put together. And, and Blair King, thank you for always thinking of these ways to support people who work and volunteer for us. I pointed out that the Gallup poll shows that about twenty-three percent of people actually volunteer in some way, but only two percent, less than two percent of people actually volunteer for any kind of official government thing, whether it's a city, county, state, or otherwise. So this is an incredibly rare group that serves our community. And I just really, it was a really nice event. So thank you for organizing it. And this Saturday, you heard it earlier from Stephanie Reese, there's going to be the Asian Monologues at Bainbridge Island Museum of Art, and I'm one of the program folks. I'm going to be telling my personal story of, well, you got to come and find out yourself. So thanks very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Deets.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, that was, that staff appreciation, or excuse me, volunteer appreciation event was, was quite good. Let's see, last, last week, April thirtieth, we, a number of us, myself and staff, met with energy-resilient specialists within Washington State Department of Commerce. Just want to highlight this. This is a, a branch of the Department of Commerce that helps communities such as ours become more energy-resilient, be it solar or battery systems or microgrid. So very productive meeting. And this, see, I'm sorry, this Thursday, I'm going to be part of representing council with, along with staff and some committee members, like the Climate Change Advisory Committee and Utility Advisory Committee. We're having kind of our, this is our first annual meeting with Puget Sound Energy, which was part of the development agreement with them. And so I'll fill you in how that meeting went after it's done. And let's see, tomorrow, I have, I'm on the Puget Sound Clean Air Advisory Council, and we are meeting tomorrow morning. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to remind us all, I'm thinking we're probably all queued up, but the Puget Sound Regional Council, oops, I got on the wrong. The General Assembly is, is next week, and so it's a big deal for us to get there and see a bunch of our colleagues from around the state, or actually, the Puget Sound region, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Quetzaln, or Deputy Mayor Quetzaln.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a number of things to go over and mention. I'm liaison to a number of the volunteer committees that do a great deal of work for the city, and that has been an important part of my council service, knitting together and trying to connect the various activities that it's kind of a loose-ended, loose-jointed organization. But we have a lot of work to do, and it does add up when, when all the pieces are put together. I was liaison to Planning Commission meetings on April twenty-fourth, May first, and May eighth. The Planning Commission is doing essential work in connection with both our sub-area planning for the town of Winslow, the, the densest part of the island, and also eventually, when we come to the completion of our update of the comprehensive plan. It's difficult to define the preferred alternative. The Planning Commission has done painstaking work, and it sometimes has been painful to watch, because there is so much detail involved and so many different perspectives on the process. And we are far behind the schedule, so there is that sort of pressure of time upon all of the activities. But we're not losing any quality and any, any level of seriousness on the part of the people doing this work. In another part of these responsibilities, on May first, I went to Seattle for the monthly meeting of the Puget Sound Regional Council's Growth Management Policy Board. The comprehensive plans of fourteen cities in our region were certified. That's an important role that that this policy board carries out, supporting the staff work of the Puget Sound Regional Council. Of the eighty-six jurisdictions in this four-county region, only twenty have not yet completed and adopted their comprehensive plans. And Bainbridge is one of those twenty behind the, behind-schedule communities, but we are working to meet our obligations and taking them very seriously. And there, there is urgency, and there's also support from the staff, both at Commerce and the Puget Sound Regional Council. On May eighth, I went to Seattle to attend an event sponsored by the Northwest Chapter of the Urban Land Institute. That's a, that's a large organization with a global reach devoted to urban planning, community planning. I learned about a global network that's based in Copenhagen, devoted to planning for sustainable urbanization. And not only to planning, but the implementation of policies and systems. Because planning is a great thing, but if you don't make the changes that the plans are devoted to, it's all been, been for naught. And the, the person representing the organization was really a dazzling, brilliant person in this region, because this organization is working with the City of Tacoma, and also this, another, another municipality in the region. We do have things to do which can call upon global expertise and problem solving. And it was a pleasure to meet the person. I'm going to write up some of the things that I heard in that presentation and share them with council members and, and planning staff. There was another event on, yes, yesterday in Seattle, organized by the King County Housing Development Consortium. It's the kickoff event in Affordable Housing Week. This is focused in King County, but I was there to learn some things, because we are tied to King County in many, many ways, as different as Kitsap County is. And on the personal level, the highlight was an opportunity to reconnect with Sophie Glass, who served the Kitsap County until recently. Now she works in Bellevue for a Regional Coalition for Housing Arch. That's a step up in, in, in her responsibilities, and I just, it was delightful to reconnect with her, and I've changed some, exchanged some emails ever since. That's mainly it. I came back yesterday just in time to join the Race Equity Advisory Committee meeting, and contributed to some of what we'll be talking about today and going forward.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor. I'll be really fast. I also got to ride the Artemis, which was really cool. I went to do it in Seattle. And I, I don't know if anyone's ever seen the Geico commercial with the pig going wee, wee. I think my fellow boat riders were a little, because I just couldn't, it was too much fun. It was like, wee. So anyhow, I did that. It was very cool. It will be groundbreaking and I bet, and change everything. Our K R C C meeting was, we actually finally saw those twenty-five A D U plans, which are, I was really excited. So I'm sure Planner Tarnus, Director Tarnus will be even more excited, but I, I can't wait to see folks be able to go to the windows or the planning counter and actually be able to use them. So they just were really, really, they looked good. I was blown away by how female-centered it was, from the architects to the planners, between Patty H B, Heather Wright. I mean, it was just this women-led, driven architectural project, which was really cool, because it was just, it was very interesting to me. So also, the volunteer appreciation event was wonderful. Thank you, Blair, and thank you for everyone who showed up. And then next, I have a reminder, next week is the Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly. And then this Thursday, May fifteenth, at three P M. at the Miller Woodlawn Cemetery in Bremerton. It's National Peace Officer Memorial Day, and so I'll be there to pay tribute to officers who passed in the line of duty, making the, and made of the ultimate sacrifice. So if you can, I'm sure it means a lot to folks, three P M. in Bremerton on the fifteenth. And yes, Planning Commission is doing their work. Race Equity Advisory Committee went yesterday. We actually got into an interesting discussion, so I'm sure it's something we'll, I think we'll be talking more about, but advisory groups and residency here on Bainbridge Island brought up that. Yes, so they would like that before council, so I have to figure out a way to do that. Yeah, so I guess we will. We will discuss that, and that's all I have. Now, our City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items I want to bring the council up to date on. As the council knows, in late twenty twenty-four, the council adopted a new sign ordinance regarding A-frame and sandwich signs and other temporary signs. That ordinance became effective about a hundred and twenty days after passage, which was last month, on the seventh, it became effective. We have allowed for about a thirty-day grace period pursuant to the provisions of the new code. The city can retrieve signs that are placed within the right-of-way and within sidewalks. This last week, we went ahead and retrieved approximately sixty signs that were placed within the public right-of-ways and on the sidewalks. And we have stored those properties. They can be retrieved by their owners at their own M yard. We did extensively provide notification to the public about We did extensively provide notification to the public about the ordinance. We put advertisements in the Bainbridge Island Review and the Kitsap Sun, multiple articles in our city highlights. Also, a letter was sent to all business owners to let them know. But at this point in time, we anticipate, at least with the A-frame signs, to begin enforcing this way from time to time if they begin to appear again on sidewalks and in, on public property. Well, we will go ahead and retrieve those and remove those. I should point out that this ordinance did create different standards for temporary signs, smaller signs. They're smaller and more subdued. They are allowed for a limited period of time. There's no permit required for the temporary signs. There is permit required for the A-frame signs, up to three per business, which can be placed on private property with the obtaining a permit fee. And then also, we have completed the paving for a bundled Madison Avenue project. We're almost completed. We still have some striping to do, which we hope to do at the end of the month, whether permitting. And unrelated to this project, I know it's come up. We do anticipate to do some corrective action on the drop curbs at Madison Avenue near Winslow Green. The project included, is a bundle project, included the replacement of sewer lines, water lines, water infrastructure, street reconstruction, street paving, and sustainable transportation improvements, pedestrian improvements, and bike lanes. The painting should help delineate by green stripes the approaches and the bike lanes, but we're looking forward to the completion of that, of the final project, and we do plan to have a ceremonial ribbon cutting to mark the occasion of a significant improvement to the city's backbone transportation system. Mayor?
Councilmember Murawaki?
Just one more thing to add to the city manager's report. The woman named Gwendolyn Wood was the artist who did the really fabulous mural for our bike corral, and it's just been finished. The, it was finished over the weekend, and the posts that hold the bikes are up. It's very, very cool. It's one of those things that kind of goes under people's radar, but when they see it, it's, it's quite exciting. So that's one of those other good ideas you've come up with.
Thank you, council member. And with that, we are on to our regular business. First item on our agenda is to receive a briefing by lobbyist Gordon Thomas Honeywell on the 2025 legislative session. I see Amina.
Yes, Mayor, we'll invite Amina Dua to the microphone. Also, we're being joined remotely, I believe, by Brianna Murray. They are, they have been representing the city in terms of Olympia and the legislative agenda, and they're here to offer comments and a briefing to the council at the end of the legislative session based upon the assumption that the legislature is not called back into session as suggested by the Seattle Times.
Thank you, Blair. Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's good to see you again, Mayor, from last week. It's a pleasure to join you all once again and provide an update on the work that took place in Olympia during the 2025 legislative session. Brianna, who is here online with us today, and I have the honor of advocating on behalf of the city of Bainbridge Island throughout this legislative session. Tonight, I will walk you through an overview of the 2025 session and what it means for the state as a whole. While Brianna will provide the city's legislative priorities and overview of the city's legislative priorities. And we'll close off today with next steps. Before we dive into the details, I want to note that we are preparing a comprehensive end-of-session report for the city. That report will include an analysis of key legislation passed and a breakdown of bills most relevant to cities, particularly those that align with Bainbridge Island's priorities. While the report will provide the finer details, my goal this evening is to highlight the major takeaways. I just realized that our PowerPoint is not up, so can we have our? Do not get one. Okay, Blair, did I send one to you, the PowerPoint?
I can share a screen. Would that be easiest?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, while I pull it up, Amina, why don't you start, dive right in on the overview, and I'll move right to that slide.
Yeah. So the 2025 session was significant for several reasons. First, it marked the beginning of a two-year legislative biennium, making it a long session that lasted 105 days. During long sessions, the legislature adopts the state's three biennial budgets, the operating, the transportation, and the capital budget, which guides spending over the next two fiscal years. So to fully understand what shaped this session, it's important to consider the political environment. Following the 2024 election cycle, 24 new legislators joined the Washington State Legislature. That level of turnover resulted in new committee assignments, leadership changes, and evolving policy priorities. Additionally, 2025 marked the beginning of Governor Ferguson's first term in office. Democrats maintained strong majorities in both chambers, so it's 59-39 in the House and 30-19 in the Senate. As the majority party, they controlled floor schedules and set the legislative agenda. Altogether, over 2,300 bills were introduced in 2025, covering topics ranging from public safety, land use, to infrastructure, environmental regulation, and government transparency. Of those, about 485 of them passed and were sent over to the governor. Because 2025 was the first year of the biennium, bills that did not pass this session remain alive and will automatically carry over into 2026. Next slide, please. This year's budget negotiations were uniquely difficult. Washington entered the session with a projected shortfall of $15 billion over four years, one of the largest fiscal challenges in over a decade. The shortfall, driven by slowing revenue growth and rising caseloads, influenced every fiscal decision and put many local projects' requests under intense scrutiny. There were concerns in the final days of session that negotiations might stall and trigger a special session. However, after intense negotiations, all three budgets were adopted and signed in die April 27th, allowing the legislature to adjourn on time. The final 25-27 operating budget totaled about $77.8 billion. It funds essential services like education, public safety, healthcare, and human services. To close the gap caused by the $15 billion projected shortfall, the legislature enacted $4.3 billion in new taxes and fees, marking the largest revenue package in state history. And they left about $2.3 billion in reserves. The $7.5 billion capital budget supports infrastructure and facilities such as schools, housing, libraries, and behavioral health centers. This year, about $201.3 million was allocated for local community projects, whereas in 2023, about $231.8 million was allocated. The average local community project awarded was $604,000. And although this was one of the most stable budgets, it was also extremely competitive, with legislators receiving 10 times the amount of funding requests. The $15.5 billion transportation budget, supported by Climate Commitment Act revenues and a six-cent gas tax increase, maintains funding for existing projects, but did not include any new project investments. In fact, there are projects that were delayed due to reduced revenue. It reflects continued investments in transit, ferries, and preservation. While the 25-27 transportation budget has an expected shortfall of about $1 billion, taxes, fees, and transfers from the operating budget will result in $3.2 billion over six years in new revenue generated. Next slide, please. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to Brianna to go over the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Amina, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to present to you virtually. And I have the privilege of going through and providing you with an update on each of the specific items that you all outlined in your legislative agenda. I want to preface this with just an overarching comment that overall, we were not very successful in advancing many of the city's legislative priorities. And so I have disappointing news to share with you this evening. With that being said, I'd urge you to think about the legislative agenda as a two-year document and that it should align with the legislative biennium. As city manager noted, there's ongoing dialogue around a potential special session. We are actively waiting to see what the governor's final actions will be prior to May 20th, his final day to either sign or veto bills. And, and we know that actions at the federal level may also call the legislature back in for a special session before we get around to January of 2026. As we go through each of these legislative priority items, we're outlining for you not just the outcome, but also the next steps on how we can continue to push for these items throughout the remainder of the legislative biennium, and hopefully still find a path forward for success on each of these items. For each item, I do think that we got the ball rolling. We just didn't roll it across the finish line. And so for each of these, I'll also be highlighting the work that we were able to get done. The first item I want to mention for you all was our $5 million capital funding request for the Winslow Workforce Housing Project. We knew going into the legislative session that $5 million request was a fairly bold request. Amina rightly outlined the demands on the capital budget, and the capital budget was going to be smaller this year than in other years. With that being said, the, the theme of workforce housing and housing in general is very prominent in Olympia, and so we felt that there was a potential path forward. We were able to work with Senator Drew Hanson, his staff, Senate Democrat Caucus staff, and Senate capital budget writers to get the $5 million included in the Senate-proposed capital budget. The general capital budget process that occurs is that the House releases a proposal, the Senate releases a proposal, and then they reconcile their respective differences. On the House side, Rep. Nance and Rep. Simmons submitted the request for the workforce housing project, but it was not included in the House-proposed capital budget. We had heard going into the reconciliation process between the House and the Senate that if a project was included in one proposal, it was highly likely to be included in the final proposal. So we were surprised when the final capital budget proposal was released and the $5 million was not included. We were able to follow up with capital budget writers after the fact and learned that a, a strong concern on appropriating the $5 million at this stage was that there is a preference for the state appropriation to be the last dollar in, and then a preference for projects, housing projects, to apply to the Housing Trust Fund first prior to seeking a direct appropriation from the legislature. The legislature did allocate over $600 million to the Housing Trust Fund, and we've had some conversations with the city manager about the process that the city and Lehigh would go through to potentially apply to that account. And I think if the city moves forward in submitting an application, we're then in a strong position to come back in the 2026 legislative session to say, okay, we did what you've said, we went and got as much money as we could from the Housing Trust Fund, and here's the balance remaining that's still needed. It's the $5 million we told you we needed last year, so please give it to us. So that's the general framing of it. With that being said, I think there is some work that we can do over the interim months and during any special sessions to engage capital budget leadership, capital budget leadership on the House side in particular, as well as local legislators. The governor's office will develop a proposed supplemental capital budget in the fall, and so we would also look to engaging his office as a new governor. We engaged the outgoing governor, Governor Inslee, as he developed his supplemental capital budget in the fall of this last year. So there's some additional new engagement that can be done there. I will note that as we go into the 2026 legislative session, it is a supplemental budget year, so they're not developing new budgets, but going in and making modifications to the budgets that were just adopted, assuming those are signed into law by the governor. There tends to be less money available in a supplemental budget. That doesn't mean that we won't be able to secure the $5 million, especially because we had the request active in the first year of the biennium. But I want to just preface that as something that I anticipate we will hear from legislators. It's always a supplemental year, we have more limited funding. But I think we've got a really compelling story. So a disappointing outcome, but a path forward to prepare us for the 2026 session, if not an opportunity in a special session sooner. The next item I want to cover is our requested legislation to protect email addresses of city newsletter subscribers from disclosure through the Public Records Act. We worked with Representative Tara Simmons to have House Bill 1765 introduced, and with Senator Short to have Senate Bill 5707 introduced. Both of these bills reflected bipartisan, or sorry, yeah, bipartisan support. Rep. Simmons' co-sponsor was Representative Waters. Representative, sorry, Senator Hanson and Senator Hosagawa both expressed support for Senate Bill 5707. We weren't, weren't able to get the Senate version of the bill scheduled for a hearing in part because the Senate Committee just ran out of time. The House bill, though, was heard before the House State Government Committee, and Amina and I had a good audience and ear of the chair of that committee, Charlotte Mena, who I think found the bill compelling. At the end of the day, there were several different bills introduced that were making changes to the Public Records Act and proposing new exemptions. And Chair Mena received direction from leadership to take a pause and not push forward a whole series of different Public Records Act exemption bills and take time over the interim to identify a more comprehensive approach to the issue. I'll note that it oftentimes takes several years to pass a policy bill, and the Public Records Act is notoriously controversial in Olympia. We also engaged the Coalition for Open Government and received some pushback from the Coalition for Open Government, who generally is concerned about the large number of exemptions existing within the Public Records Act. While they did express opposition, I think there is still a path forward for us to push these proposals through the legislative process. All bills that were introduced in 2025 that did not pass into law automatically carry over into 2026. So these bills will remain in the system and remain able to be under consideration next session. Over the interim months, we'll focus on meeting with members of the state government committees in both the House and the Senate, engaging the Coalition for Open Government and, and exploring other coalition or stakeholder support. We have the support of the Association of Washington Cities, but we are also aware that the Public Ports Association has interest in making changes around exemptions in the Public Records Act, so we can explore whether there's a broader effort that would be able to be put together and speak to the concerns that were articulated by leadership. The next item is calling on the state to provide reliable ferry service and in particular, providing additional resources for ferry line management. On the reliable ferry service front, Governor Ferguson announced early in the legislative session and early in his administration that he was going to delay the conversion of the next ferry that is scheduled to be converted until after the World Cup 2026. My understanding is what that means is that the current conversion will be completed, and that ferry will return to the Bainbridge Island route. And there will be no impact then on further service to the Bainbridge Island route until after the World Cup 2026, when the, when the second conversion begins, and there may be a, a further, further impact on service levels. I'll also note that just this week, after we had finalized these slides, the Washington State ferries received the bids for the five new ferries that are anticipated to be constructed and delivered to the state in 2029. Those are anticipated to be hybrid electric ferries, and they, those bids came in higher than what the state had hoped for. The state and the governor are going to be looking and evaluating those bids and making a decision on how to proceed forward with those bids in the coming months. In addition to that, the transportation budget that Amina outlined in our overview slide allocated $1.8 billion to ferry improvements. Much of that money is carrying out projects that are already underway or planned, such as the hybrid construction, terminal electrification, and so on and so forth. Some notable changes in the revenue proposal. Some notable changes in the revenue proposal is that the uh the state did look to generate more transportation revenue by requiring ferry riders to pay a surcharge when they use their debit card. Right now, that's a cost that ferry riders are uh or sorry, that the state is incurring and the the state plans to transfer that cost to ferry riders. Um additionally, the legislature approved House Bill twelve sixty four, which uh provides competitive wages for ferry staff. Moving into our more specific request, uh we had asked that the legislature appropriate a total of two million dollars in the twenty five twenty seven transportation budget to support a law enforcement presence at ferry terminals to mitigate ferry line cutting. Um a two million dollar request would fr- reflect a nine hundred thousand dollar increase in spending from the two thousand and twenty three twenty five biennium to the twenty five twenty seven biennium. The Senate proposed transportation budget included that increase in funding, uh and I have to give Senator Hanson credit for working with members of the Senate Transportation Committee to get that increase included. Um however, disappointingly, the final transportation budget only included a total of six hundred thousand for that purpose. So while the Senate proposed budget went up to that two million dollar amount, the final transportation budget actually made made cuts from uh the twenty three twenty five level of service. Uh all that cut is in the context of the transportation budget facing that over one billion dollar shortfall in the current biennium. Uh and um and a series of projects were delayed um and several investments cut in addition to them choosing to increase the gas tax to make that 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 budget balance. And so we're not alone in seeing a a cut in revenues there. We have uh several stakeholders that share that experience. As far as next steps, um I in in talking with legislators, they're very anxious to hear about the outcome of the Genoptik Pilot Program that you all are advancing forward. Uh and um and then I think we continue to keep legislators informed as there are incidents related to ferry line cutting uh on Bainbridge Island and make the case for the inclusion of an increase in funding in the supplemental transportation budget. And those are the three main items on your legislative priorities that wanted to make sure that we talked through in greater detail. In addition to those three items, you all have a comprehensive policy document that provides direction to us on the plethora of other issues that the legislature considers that has have an impact on city government. I want to just very quickly in each one of these categories call out one item. Under Climate Action Implementation, the legislature approved the Recycling Reform Act, Senate Bill fifty two eighty four, which is a full extended producer responsibility uh format to manage the state's solid waste system and should result in a reduction in local costs. Under transportation, the six cent gas tax that increase that was imposed does have a requirement that two point five percent of the revenue from that that increase be distributed to cities for maintenance purposes. So you should see a slight increase in transportation maintenance services. Under land use and planning, the legislature continued their recent uh tradition of preempting local control. Um and uh however, Bainbridge Island was largely not uh included in many of their mandates. For example, the legislature mandated that cities with a population of over thirty thousand not significantly reduce parking requirements for new construction. Uh they also uh mandated that all jurisdictions allow for administrative lot splitting. However, it exempted islands on a sole source aquifer. Uh and there's a new policy that the Department of Commerce will evaluate local housing elements and comprehensive plans for compliance on an audit basis. Um I think if the the council wanted to look at parking requirements or some of these other components, while not mandated, there is now a state framework in place for you all to turn to uh as the sort of standard that the state is hoping local jurisdictions will adopt, and that could be helpful in a cost savings on staff time. On housing, the legislature focused on stability, supply, and subsidy. On stability, the key key legislation that was approved was uh rent regulation that prevents rent increases from being any greater than seven percent plus CPI or ten percent, um whichever is less. On the supply side, they really focused on the land use items that I outlined just previously, particularly the parking bill. And on subsidy, over six hundred million was allocated to the Housing Trust Fund. Under utilities and infrastructure, we saw the legislature choose to sweep the Public Works Assistance Account, which is a key local account for uh utilities and infrastructure funding. However, they did backfill their sweep with a hundred million dollars in bond revenue. So the message there is it's disappointing, but it could have been a lot worse, and we're thankful that they at least made that backfill investment and that the account will uh continue to replenish itself in the years ahead. Under community safety, the legislature at the governor's request appropriated a hundred million dollars in grants for hiring law enforcement officers and provided each city and county in the state the ability to increase the sales tax uh by one tenth of one percent for criminal justice purposes. There are a series of requirements that jurisdictions have to meet, both to receive the grant and the sales tax authority. Um but those are two new fund sources available for community safety. And finally, under local government and finance, uh local government, finance, and general government, the uh legislature uh fully funded state shared revenues. There are several accounts where the city receives a distribution of money from the state. Uh and in tough budget years, we've often seen those reduced. This year, those were all fully funded. Um and which is uh something to be very thankful for, given the tough budget situation. The legislature did have a robust debate on whether or not to lift the one percent cap on local property tax levy growth, and they opted not to do that this year. Uh and instead, just focused on a policy around school district enrichment levies. Uh so I tried to cram in a lot of the policy statement items there very quickly. Um but as Amina mentioned, we will be providing a comprehensive written report that goes through each of these subject areas in detail. We also are providing uh all of our city clients with a handout of the approximately a hundred and thirty different bills that passed that have an impact on city government.
Thank you, Brianna. And um going back to the next for next steps. Um I know despite the uh what had came out of the legislative session, I do want to encourage you all to thank your legislators for their ongoing service and the work they've been doing. Um as you know, uh being a legislator's thankless job and appreciation from fellow elected officials goes a long way. They did really work hard for Bainbridge Island and they uh will continue to do so next session as well. Um second, with the many bills that have passed, there's significant work ahead. City staff who already have full plates on their agenda will have even more to do in the coming months and years to ensure that the the bills that have passed were pro- are properly implemented. And lastly, um we have a few big items on our agenda that we're going to be moving forward to in the two thousand and twenty six session. So we definitely want to start early. So I know it's, I know it's early to talk about two thousand and twenty six, but we want to get started on that right away. Um, next slide, please. And with that, I just want to thank you all for your time and attention. I know we've covered a lot, and I appreciate your engagement and support throughout this process. Brianna and I's contact information is up there, so feel free to reach out to us whenever you want, you need to.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amina. Thank you, Brianna.
Yeah, and I just, I want to give a special thanks to all of you for making the trip down to Olympia to join us in the advocacy efforts. I know that was time out of all of your schedules, uh and uh really appreciate appreciate your partnership in advancing these issues forward. Um and hopefully, if we continue to work together, we can get some of them across the finish line.
Thank you so much, and thanks, Amina.
Yep.
Councilmember Marwaki.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Matthews. Thank you, Amina, and thank you, uh Brianna as well. Brianna, could you go back to the slide that showed the uh law enforcement appropriation? Uh it was a, I just want to understand what happened there. It was two million dollars that could have gone up to, but the House only had six hundred, so six hundred, right? Um so that was a drop of one point four from the original hope?
Correct, right, a drop from one point four. So we, in the twenty three twenty five transportation budget, uh there was one point one million dollars allocated to uh law enforcement presence at the ferry terminals. We were asking that that be increased by nine hundred thousand for around two hu- two million. And instead of increasing the money as was proposed in the Senate, the final transportation budget actually reduced from one point one million down to six hundred thousand.
So the House reduced it, uh what is that? That's eight hundred thousand, right?
Oh, gosh, you're asking me to do math on the mark.
Yeah.
One point.
I think that's right.
Yeah, um.
So that's really disappointing because one point, one point.
Five hundred thousand, yeah.
Somewhat adequate. And just a reminder, you know, all you folks, we we're hoping this because if we give um the opportunity to have perhaps um some state troopers at our ferry terminal help direct traffic and flow and um that's, that's really disappointing for us. Um I know you guys did well. Uh but it's really kind of surprising that the uh House reduced it so much from what was already an existing budget item. Is that right? One point, one point four million already, and they reduced it to six hundred. Do you have any idea what that, what the idea was behind that?
Uh to be honest, I think it it was not, along with many other cuts, it was not a cut that they wanted to make, but simply uh that they needed to make cuts somewhere in order to balance their budget, and it was an area where they could a cut, cut the funding amount essentially in half and still provide some level of service. I'd also say that the one point one million that was included in twenty three twenty five is not money that has been in the budget for many years. So as they're looking back at what services have we added that maybe we shouldn't have or that we now need to roll back, we kind of fell in that category.
Thank you, and thank you all for all your work on trying to get the uh funding for um workhouse workforce accommodations. I realize it was a tough lift. I hope we can uh what I've, we've, I thank my legislators, I hope I have to. Uh do, we do have to thank Senator Hanson and Representatives uh um um Nance and and uh um Simmons. Because they did carry the load. Tara Simmons tried to carry the one for the uh, the uh release of the emails. And then uh Greg Nance was always there for the ferries and um Senator Nan, I mean Senator Hanson sure did a lift. Um just a big shout out to our buds over there.
Thank you so much. Um thank you, Brianna, for opening your home to us and welcoming us and um really being there for any question or anything we need. And Amina, above and beyond, thank you so much. Um any thing we needed, you were always there. Um even this weekend, Rep Nance and I had a town hall right here in at City Hall, and Amina showed up. So it was just a really nice surprise and felt very supported. So thank you both. We'll get there. Um, thanks. All right. Next, we are on to introducing findings from the two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five Water Sewer and Storm Surface Water Management Utility Study, and that's Public Works.
Yes, and Chris Worsicki is going to provide for our comments here. We'll point out that uh we, this is an item that we hope to also review with the City Council at the May twentieth study session, but we want to go ahead and get this on the table and highlight this for you tonight and the work that the Utility Advisory Commission has done on this as well.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh Chris Worsicki, Public Works Director. Good evening again, Council. As the City Manager mentioned, uh we are really giving you this information to digest this evening and uh expect to carry the conversation over and questions with you to the May twentieth meeting, so uh next Tuesday. Uh but wanted to uh make sure you had all the information beforehand. So uh what we're going to do tonight is uh review the rate study findings uh uh for Water Sewer and the Storm and Surface Water Management Utilities. Uh this rate study was started in the fall of two thousand and twenty four and was completed uh just this spring, two thousand and twenty five. We're also going to review uh some of the findings from the uh Equity Toolkit that we use to develop recommendations for the Low Income Program. And as I mentioned, uh your discussion is scheduled for May twentieth. So here's uh all of the high level points. Uh so the last rate study was performed in twenty two, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. And that is twenty twenty three is when you last adopted uh rate increases for all, for water and the sewer utility. Uh the study recommended that we look again at the utility rates in a in a couple of years after we had uh more firm information about some of the largest capital investments that we're making, particularly the uh Winslow Water Tank and the uh wastewater treatment plant capacity upgrades. Uh because the original study was only based on estimates for those projects. We now have majority of known costs for those two projects, and so we revisited the rates uh to determine what adjustments needed to be made. Uh in addition, this study incorporates uh, it incorporates those costs, but it also incorporates uh a much more conservative outlook uh on the future of the utility revenue, given the kind of the uncertainties in the current economic situation as well. So in terms of the rate uh summaries, uh the water rate increases that were adopted in two thousand and twenty three right now will be consistent through two thousand and twenty seven. That is what the recommendation is, uh with additional increases necessary through two thousand and thirty. The sewer rate increases are now necessary through two thousand and thirty as well. Before, uh in the last rate study only recommended uh cost of uh inflationary increases only, and we'll go over the details of this. Uh both the water and sewer funds are drawing down uh capital reserves and are expected to be supported by general obligation bonds, which we expect to issue later this year. And on the surface uh storm and surface water management utility, which we'll refer to as SWIM, uh those rates are sufficient to meet the system needs with only inflationary increases at this time. Uh as City Manager mentioned, I want to highlight uh that a lot of work uh went into these uh this, these recommendations from the city's Utility Advisory Committee. They met over the course of seven meetings uh at the uh since last fall and early spring. Uh and they provided input on a number of the different aspects of these rates, including uh the ink, the um alternatives for the rate increases and the timing, uh the balancing these increases between existing customers and new growth. And uh recommend uh supporting the recommendations on the low income program that we'll talk about as well. So let's start with water, and then uh we'll go through the details of that, and then we'll move to sewer and SWIM. So what is driving the need for a rate increase for the water utility? Well, the current rates will not meet the system needs. When we uh estimated the rates in two thousand and twenty three, as I mentioned, we were using estimates for some of our largest capital investments. We now know what some of those costs are because you have seen and approved most of them. The anticipated uh twenty four to thirty uh Water Capital Improvement Plan, which is what CIP stands for, was uh twenty five million dollars. Those known costs are now in the range of thirty one million dollars. In terms of uh where we expect uh some assumptions that went into the model related to revenue, uh we are expecting an issuance of about a five million dollar general obligation bond to support the projects in the Capital Improvement Plan for Water. Uh we are assuming some borrowing rate assumptions that are higher than in the previous rate study. Um last rate study estimated about a three and a half percent borrowing rate. We are now closer to four point seven five. And we're, as I mentioned, assuming very conservative growth rates. Uh for the water, we are assuming about fourteen new connections per year, which is uh some about average of what we've seen in the last year or two going forward. So that is about as less than a one percent increase in in uh util in water connections going forward per year. So these are what the rates look like. Um looking at these by color, uh you can see at the bottom of each of these bars includes a three and a half percent inflationary increase. That's standard across for every year. And then looking at the orange bars, these are the increases that you approved uh back in two thousand and twenty three. Uh twenty one and a half percent in twenty six and twenty seven. And the green is what is now proposed to meet the new uh recommendations. So we have twenty one and a half percent in twenty eight, thirteen percent in twenty nine and thirty. And as you can see, in the twenty six through twenty eight, we're also including one percent per year to fund the expanded low income discount program, which we'll talk about in a minute. This exhibit shows uh the proposed fee or rate increases uh and the financial plan. So if you look at, you can see how uh we're expecting to uh spend this money. The blue bars at the bottom represent the expenses for operations and maintenance, which you can see are just going up slightly every year as as a result of inflation. Uh debt service is the green bar. That is uh the the money that we'll be paying back on this general obligation bond that we're planning for this year. And you can see that in twenty nine and thirty, the the utility does have enough money to start spending capital reserve, uh some of its capital reserves on projects as well. Those are the yellow bars. The resulting uh rates for the average single family home uh in twenty, well, the current rates in two thousand and twenty five, you can see down there at the bottom of the chart at forty five dollars uh per month. Our uh rates in two thousand and twenty six would increase those rates to about fifty seven dollars per month. Uh and as you can see, looking at some of our um uh other jurisdictions in the region, uh we're still kind of been about in the halfway uh towards the most expensive monthly rates. We have not included two thousand and twenty seven because we do not know what other jurisdictions will be planning in terms of rate increases for comparison purposes. In terms of the fees that folks pay for what is called an SPF or a system participation fee, that is the fee that is paid when you join, when you become a customer and connect to the water system. Those fees are currently at about seven thousand dollars. They're right in the middle of the pack. After these proposed rate increases, the charges for new connection would be more like ten thousand five hundred. And this is intentional. The Utility Advisory Committee wanted to explore methods for placing some of the burden of the costs for new improvements onto the system, onto new growth and new customers in the system. And this is a primary way of doing that is by increasing the, the, the charges for new customers to join the system. In terms of capital planning, we are still expecting to complete the water tank and the offsite improvements, which is a significant piece of that project. You may have seen, if you've walked by the water tank, that the roof is on, so we are getting close to painting season, so we'll be doing that part of the work next. We are planning to bundle and advance a water main replacement as a part of the Eagle Harbor Drive non-motorized improvement project, similar to what we did with Madison, to try and reduce costs there and reduce overall disruptions to the public. So that project will be going forward as well. We also have a two-year schedule for Fletcher Bay and Headed, and Headed the Bay well site rehabilitation projects, which are key maintenance projects for us. And we are proposing postponing other major water utility projects until twenty twenty eight because we have quite a slate of projects up until, up until then. So this is kind of interesting chart. Just a little bit of information before we move on to sewer. So this chart shows you where the utility rates would have been if we had increased them by inflation every year starting in twenty ten. And the blue line on the chart represents where we have actually been. As you may remember from previous discussions on the rate studies, if you were here in twenty three, the rate, water rates were lowered in twenty eleven, and they were not increased for a number of years until almost twenty, twenty twenty. As you can see, the, the chart, the bar starts to go up there at the very end. So interestingly enough, if we had raised water rates by inflation every year since twenty ten, we would be somewhere right around where we need it to be right now at eighty three dollars a month in twenty twenty seven, and we're proposing seventy one. So it's unfortunate that we're catching up right now, but it is. It's clear that, you know, this money was needed to be able to do the capital projects and maintenance type work for this utility. And that we are making up for that, for that loss now. You're going to see a very similar situation in sewer when we get there. I also want to remind you that the Public Works Department worked hard to get low interest loans to support the Winslow Water Tank. Those low interest loans in the amount of almost twenty million dollars saved ratepayers six million dollars over the course of that, the life of that loan, which is the, almost as much as we are borrowing right now. So it was a, a big chunk of money, and we don't want to lose track of that. So that closes up water. So let's move on to sewer. So why does sewer need a rate increase? Well, again, the current rates will not meet the system needs. When we looked at the rates in twenty twenty three and looked at this slate of projects and costs, the anticipated CIP between twenty four and thirty was about twenty three million. We now know it's probably closer to thirty four million. The revenue assumptions for sewer are that we will issue a seven point seven million dollar general obligation bond in twenty twenty five to support the capital improvements. Again, we're looking at that same borrowing rate. And similar to water, we are predicting very conservative growth assumptions, something like twenty connections per year, which is again about one percent or a little less than one percent in growth per year. A similar chart here for sewer, you can see the inflationary increases across the board at the bottom of these bar charts. All of the green are new increases for twenty, for twenty twenty six, eleven percent for the next three years and nine for twenty nine and thirty. And again, you'll see the one percent for the low income program that we'll talk about in a minute. These, here is the sewer financial plan. You can see, again, operations and maintenance expenses there rising slowly between twenty five and thirty. Debt service kind of creeping up as we issue that bond in twenty twenty five. But a more significant amount of capital reserve funding going into projects for sewer. Sewer Fund was in a little bit better shape in terms of capital reserve than the water utility was. In terms of the average monthly bill, right now, the bill is about a hundred and fourteen dollars, which is pretty close to a lot of our comparable agencies. You can see a lot of bills in a hundred dollar range there. After the increases in twenty twenty six, we'll be a little closer to the top at a hundred and thirty two dollars a month. In terms of the system participation fee, which is similar approach as we took, take with water for new customers joining the system, the current system participation fee is about thirteen thousand. The new participation fee would be eighteen thousand. And again, similar rationale, rationale there to try and place some of the burden of improvements to the system on the, the system growth. In terms of capital planning, we are, you have approved, moving forward with capity, capity, capacity upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant. That is moving forward. We are planning to separate the Eagle Harbor Level Beach Mainz Project, which is expected to be go to construction this fall into two phases, one in twenty five and twenty eight, to kind of spread those costs out a little bit more. We are deferring some pump station upgrades by about two years, and we're deferring the wastewater treatment plant downfall extension by two years to twenty thirty. And this is a project that is still going to design and permitting, although the actual construction won't happen for a number of years. And if you remember, this is a regulatory project that we are mandated to do by the state. So here's that same chart for the sewer utility. You can see the green line that represents what we would, where the rates would have been if we'd increased for inflation every year since twenty eleven. And you can see the blue line is where we have been. Rates were flat between twenty eleven and twenty twenty two. So we are catching up now. And as you can see, by the time we get to twenty twenty seven, we'll be kind of right where we would have been if we had done those increases all along, right? We'll quickly look at the SWIM rates, Storm and Surface Water Management. As I mentioned, this fund does have significant capital reserves. There is no need to propose any rate increases at this time other than inflationary. So that is all you see on the bar charts here is three and a half percent per year across the board through twenty thirty. Majority of those, that fund, those funds are going to operations and maintenance expenses, and, but we are building capital projects as well, as you can see, and using that capital reserve every year, the yellow bars to support those projects. I also want to highlight that when we, when the City Council approved the Stormwater System Plan about two or three months ago, we talked about the value of potentially bringing on some new staff members in the Stormwater Utility to support operations and maintenance as well as the replacement of some of implementing replacement projects. This plan includes four new staff members, one for engineering and three for operations and maintenance that we can afford under the current rates. There is a double benefit to doing this, to taking this action, not just for the Stormwater Utility. But right now, our utility crews service all three utilities, Water Sewer and SWIM. And by creating a separated crew for SWIM utilities, not only will we take advantage of that crew to be able to perform the work specifically and do more of it for the SWIM utility, but we'll take some of the burden off of the other crews that are doing critical work for water and sewer. So water and sewer will also get more attention as a result of this investment. Considering that we can make it without increasing rates, we, we hope that you'll consider moving that recommendation forward. In terms of the SWIM bill, right now, residents pay that bill as part of their property tax assessment. They pay it once a year. That annual fee right now is two hundred and forty four dollars on average, and it would be raised to two hundred fifty two dollars next year with an inflationary increase. Okay, so let's look at the low income fee reduction program, as you might remember, and as I know rate increases is not on your areas of emphasis, and I can understand why, but the Equity Lens is. And that is something that we have, you wanted piloted that project through this, piloted that, that program through this project. So I want to explain how that has worked. First, I'll tell you about our existing low income fee reduction program. So in our code, it's modeled on the Kitsap County Property Tax Reduction Program. Persons sixty one or older, or they have a qualified income, which right now is forty eight thousand five hundred seventy four dollars, but that changes every year. Or people who are low income and disabled can receive a fifty percent discount on their utility rates, all three utilities. We have about seventy customers who currently use this program. So that's, it's a fairly low number, actually. I know you can't read this, but the purpose was to, to highlight the fact that we are piloting this, the use of the Equity Lens as a part of this project. We use the Equity Toolkit to review and modify, make recommendations to this low income program. The Toolkit is really just a series of questions that we ask ourselves about what the proposed actions are, what the potential impacts of those actions are on marginalized and vulnerable populations, and how we can mitigate those impacts as best we can. And our Equity Officer, Unshu, helped us walk through this analysis with us and helped us come to these conclusions. One of the things that's most important about the Equity Analysis is getting some data. We don't always have the data we need to be able to make these kinds of analyses. That's part of the challenge. And so we did a customer survey, and as you can see, we received five hundred and fifty five responses. We put a flyer in the utility bills, and we asked people to voluntarily respond, and I think that's actually a pretty good turnout higher than we expected. We, and I'm just going to run through a couple of the quick questions that we asked folks, not all of them. But some of them where we asked people for their race and ethnicity. You can see a big, everything that's not pink there is people of color. We asked folks about their ages that represented in their households. As you can see, our community skews, at least the, the utility community skews older. The purple and blue parts of that bar represent people who are fifty five and over. It's almost two thirds. We asked if anyone in their home had a disability, and we had about fifteen percent of people who said yes. We asked about total household income, and you can see the red box there highlighting two income brackets between zero and sixty thousand dollars per year, which represented about twenty percent of the people who submitted this customer survey, which is higher than the amount of people who are currently participating in the program, which is, you know, barely less than one percent. So it seemed like there was some work to do there to try and bring more people who may be eligible in, into the program and potentially expand the eligibility for the program so that folks could take advantage of it. Here you can see, if people were asked, people were asked if they would participate in our existing program, you can see three and a half percent said yes, when that skews about correctly, given the amount of participants that we had in the survey. So the recommendation that we came forward with was to eliminate the age and the disability qualification for this program and focus it entirely on, on individuals or families who are low income. There was a time at which that was not allowed under state law, but it currently is allowed. And so we're proposing to expand it in that way. Additionally, it works, we are looking to recommend creating some thresholds within the income bracket. These three income brackets match the Kitsap Property Tax Deduction Program. These income levels are determined by the Kitsap Assessor's Office every year, and so we would be reliant upon referring to that analysis that the Assessor's Office does to, to create these rate reduction programs. And as you can see, it's a tiered rate from zero to forty six thousand. You could get a sixty percent reduction, and then you could get a fifty percent reduction for fifty six through sixty five. We have, part of the, the, the challenge of this, of executing this program is not done yet, which is, once it is approved, getting people to be aware that it's out there and getting them, and assisting them with signing up and determining their eligibility. So we still have to develop the outline of that program, but if the City Council decides to move forward with this, that is part of our next steps. So an additional next, next steps, as I mentioned, the discussion on this is forwarded to May twentieth study sessions. That's where we will be able to answer all your detailed questions about anything you've seen today. Afterwards, we would consider bringing forward ordinances to adopt both the rates and the low income program as two separate ordinances on May twenty seventh and then on June tenth. And that concludes my presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Director Werszicki. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment from the perspective of liaison to this committee. There are no cheap thrills in the meetings. It's a hardworking committee, and they work very gracefully and efficiently with the consultant who provided extra expertise, did a lot of the work between meetings and in preparation for the, the work of, you know, a specific part of, of the agenda. So this was a, a very well-developed set of policy changes. I especially admire the the equity, the attention to equity and the way that all the different factors were considered and, and worked into the picture. So we do know that it's something that, it's, this will be a welcome change, a really helpful change. And it's a good test of the Equity Toolkit, which is, which is important. We all need to be aware of that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember, we're, or Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Boy, I hope this council is not making decisions out of convenience that a council ten or twenty years from now is going to hate us for. Thanks a lot, guys. What I wanted to ask was, on one of your earlier slides, you, there was a, a note there about a connection fee for new users. And I wanted to just clarify, does that always mean that that's because of like new construction or what, what, what would qualify? City Manager, I don't know if you want to take that question or, or what?
We'll go ahead and have the Public Works Director answer, but then we, I'd like to respond a little bit to the philosophy about system buy-in fees.
Yes, you're right. So the participation fees are primarily for new construction, the majority of our system. We do have some existing homes that do choose to connect for, for water and sewer within our, within our boundaries, but the majority of people who are paying those fees are, are new to the system, and so they're new connections.
So to, to piggyback, in some ways, you're like impact fees, but the basic philosophy is that existing ratepayers are paying for the infrastructure and the upgrades in the infrastructure. Someone new needs to reimburse the system for the costs that were invested in the infrastructure to have the system available for them to buy into.
Right. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that.
Everyone would understand.
Well, I was assuming that, but the City Manager and I have been going back and forth a little bit on some fees for a new business and just wanted to be sure that this wasn't one of those that was sort of impacting that scenario. Thank you.
Councilmember Merwaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews, and thank you, Councilmember Schneider. You made a comment about previous flat lines. That line is really, if it had been adjusted for inflation, we may have not had to been in this position, so let's just keep that in mind. I like, Deputy Mayor Quitzlin was correct on the Equity Toolkit, and I like how the Utility Advisory Committee came up with a method to increase the potential participation of that. And if I read this right, or your presentation was right, that, but that is a drop, that is a cut in those rates, which is, I think, appropriate, but it does increase the rates of everyone else by a percent. Is that, is that how it worked, I think? To, to make the affordable rates work, that it would be a, a shift of, okay, I just wanted to, I thought that math was correct. It's a, a big decision we have before us, but we do have to keep our utilities in good shape. That's really important. That's for everyone down the line. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Merwaki. Councilmember Deets.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just following up my colleagues, I, I do have a question. So if I understood, about seventy people were part of the current low income program, was that, did I get that number right? Do you have an anticipation of what that number may be with the new program, like hopefully more? So just open question there.
I'll address that question. The, the assumptions that we made about the low income program assume a doubling of the size of the, of the program. So we assume that another seventy customers might participate. But, you know, we probably won't have more than that within the timeframe of doing another rate study in two to three years to determine how that impacts the system.
Okay, thank you. And of course, the challenge would be to let folks know about this and sign up.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenrir Johnson.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and follow up on Councilmember Snyder and Mori. Hi, yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and follow up on Councilmember Snyder and Morawaki. The idea that, you know, the rate was flat for 11 years, it's kind of stunning to me that we waited this long to increase, and now it's kind of like it's a big increase because we've waited. And so, yeah, it's going to impact a lot of people. And I guess I was wondering about the low-income program, and it seems to me that the, even though it may get more people, it seems like it's not quite enough. And I'm just wondering if we could raise that income level a bit to try to get more people.
Thank you, Councilmember Fenrir Johnson. I pretty much echo everything, so I'm not going to take more time and say, and ask anything in addition. Just really, really love seeing the use of the Equity Toolkit, especially considering the members of the UAC. I just find it amazing. I mean, they're mostly, you can say it, elder, older folks, and I just find it awesome that they, they use this toolkit, so that's really cool. Just in looking at the graphs, I found it interesting. For sewer, it looked like our rates were like closer to the top, but water and sewer, we were both in the middle. So I was just curious about why those were a little bit different. And then just maybe some explanation of why deferring projects was all just for the public's sake, but that's about it. City Manager, sorry.
Let's, in terms of, we can have the Public Works Director talk about the deferral of projects in terms of, well, let's talk about deferral projects, if you talk about projects to be deferred. And then I'll just say that we generally look at comparison cities. We understand no one likes to raise rates, who want to see how we compare. But in some cases, individual circumstances of individual systems are somewhat different, depending upon how long major capital projects waited.
Yeah, the age of the system, the sizes of the system, they all play a variable in determining rates. It's, so mostly we just look to see, are we, are we, how do we compare with what else is out there in the region? In terms of deferring projects, we do not like to defer projects, but we are looking for ways to try and limit the amount of borrowing that we're doing and trying to also spread out the spending on projects to be able to kind of smooth out the cash flow situation so that we are able to afford to do the larger projects that we have in the pipeline. We don't feel that we've deferred anything that would cause an emergency or an emergent situation, hopefully. But, yeah, depending on, that, one thing I did not mention is that both the water and the sewer have two large projects happening right now, right? The capacity improvements and the water tank. They both also have fairly sizable contingencies associated with those two projects because we need to have cash on hand in case something comes up we need to deal with. We don't know whether that money will be spent or not. And so at the end of both of those projects, what we plan on doing is preparation for the next study we'll be doing in two years, is saying, okay, did we need to spend all that money? And if not, are there any of those deferred projects that we could potentially bring back into the plan?
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Merwaki.
Yeah, just one front point, there was the one that was state mandated, that's to increase or make the outfall go further into the
No motion.
Into the harbor, so it would be underneath, but we're deferring that at this time. What would that possibly be? Because something, we're going to build this thing, and just need an estimate on what that might be, because that may impact our future rates.
Well, in terms of the sewer outfall, which is mandated project to avoid the gooey deck.
Not sure if I understand the question, is you saying, is there, will there be an issue with deferring it? Is that the question?
No, that's not, well, I don't have a problem with that at all. I was just saying that someday we're going to have to do it, because it is state mandated, right? And so just an idea of what that might be, and we may want to think about how to adjust the rates. So if at a situation we, once again, have to move it up, because here's a multimillion-dollar project we didn't have plans for, so I just, just want to think ahead and not, not surprises here.
We've worked with, so the Department of Natural Resources and Department of Ecology are the two agencies that kind of oversee the regulatory framework of, related to the outfall. And we've discussed with them deferring the project to 2030, and they understand it's an expensive project and that we are making progress, which is part of the reason why we are continuing the design and permitting for the work to show them, we are continuing to work on this and move it, advance it. And it's possible, you know, depending on how our spending plan and how the growth of the system continues over the next two years, that we could potentially bring the project, you know, closer into the planning period.
Right, we just had a report from our lobbyist in the state just went through a deal, but if it's not funded by the state, this is perfect, it's called an unfunded mandate, where we're required to do something, but you're not giving us money to do it. So I think, and the state's trying to be more responsive about that, that's really unfair to local governments. So I hope that, just something I think we got to think about down the road here.
Mayor, this, again, will be a topic of discussion at your study session on the 20th. I don't want to prolong it, but I do want to say that I can recall a time long ago with another city council where they were having similar discussion, and they described it in the context of eating well versus sleeping well. The eating well context was that, well, we can keep the rates low, and everyone can eat well. But we have a lot of capital projects we need to do, and we will have to delay those, and those won't get done. We don't know how we can pay for them. But on the other hand, rather than eating well, we can sleep well. We can know that we're taking care of our infrastructure, that we're not delaying improvements that are needed on the water and the wastewater system, and that we're trying to avoid being exposed to the vagaries of interest rates to have bonded debt. And so, again, something more we can talk about the 20th, but again, that stuck with me for a lot of decades is the context of we can eat well or we can sleep well.
Thank you, City Manager. Okay, I think I don't see any more lights. We will move on to our next agenda item. Thank you, Director Worsicki.
The next item for you is to consider a report, not take final action, but to forward it if it is bearable to you to the next meeting for adoption. And that is an issue that we've been dealing with probably since 2022, and that is the policy for the allocation of additional sewer connections related to the South Island Sewer Area, and the sewer connection is available from Sewer District 7.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm not going to be voting on this one, it's just a little too close to home for me, but I'll sit here for deliberation.
Okay, well, thank you again. Marathon presentations this evening. I'll give you the updates on the South Island Connection Policy Update. You last talked about this in February. So just a brief background, so you remember, it was a couple of months ago, and we'll review some of the sewer connection policy revisions that you recommended at that meeting that we are now trying to accommodate in the policy. And we are looking forward to moving this resolution forward for adoption to your next meeting. So in terms of background, you probably remember, the South Island Sewer System was constructed in the early 2000s through a local improvement district. The city owns the collection and the pumping system in that area, and we, the wastewater is treated by an interlocal agreement in ILA with the Kitsap Sewer District 7, which is in the process, as we now know, of merging with the Kitsap Public Utility District. The sewer boundary is shown in blue, so the majority of the areas in the western side of the map, you can see Point White and Pleasant Beach, as well as the Emerald Heights neighborhood and Blakely School. And we also have a sewer boundary area over on the far east side of the map there at Rockaway Beach. The yellow areas of the map, which are surrounding the blue sewer areas, are something called the adjacent areas, which are identified in the original sewer policy as places where sewer connections could potentially be made under very specific circumstances. We currently have an agreement with the Sewer District 7 for 480, 81 equivalent residential units, ERUs. Those are essentially one residential connection is equivalent to one ERU. All of those 481 ERUs are either physically connected to the system or they are reserved for connection through the local improvement district 20, and there's about 130 of those that are, that are not connected but reserved. This, the revised agreement that you agreed to about a year ago allows for 25 new connections at a rate of four per year, oh, sorry, as a rate of seven per year over the next four years. The discussions we had in fall 2024 were around limiting connections to existing development, to serving residences with failing septic systems, trying to serve environmental protection and also serve affordable housing. So we proposed some policies, and the council made some recommended changes to those policies that we'll briefly go over here. These are the sewer connection policies within the sewer boundary, so within those blue lines that we looked at on the map. Again, new or existing public facilities was the first criteria. And then you can see the changes here are in red, so existing residences with failing septics, where the replacement system is constrained to within 100 feet of a critical area buffer. That was a specific recommendation from the council. You could have, essentially trying to capture the fact that some properties may not be entirely encumbered by critical areas and may have space, but they may not have space for septic within that area. Also, that the septic status as failing or near failing would be determined by the Kitsap Health District. That was another recommended change. Existing residences with failing septics, not near critical areas and no alternatives, so this is a prioritized list, right? So we're going, that is the third priority. Fourth priority is, and this was a recommendation from the council, properties within existing residence served by a failing or soon-to-be failing septic where the owner is enrolled in a Kitsap County Low-Income Property Tax Relief Program. And as I was thinking about the, the presentation we just had about the city's low-income program, I'm thinking we should probably change this to our own program. Anybody who is eligible for that program would be eligible here, so we'll make that change for the next round. The next criteria would be an existing commercial space requiring additional ERU. That was a part of the original policy. We've had some businesses come to us and say, the Health District is requiring that we have another sink or we have another, some sort of facility that requires wastewater, and we have no way of dealing with those sorts of changes. So that, this is intended to address those circumstances, and the council requested that we add for existing non-expanded uses. The last prioritizations of the policy did not change. New residential at maximum density and deemed affordable. New residential at less than maximum density and deemed affordable. And then new accessory dwelling units only if affordable. So then we did make, we are going to make a change to the policies for the adjacent open space areas. These are the yellow spaces on the map. That would be only for new or existing public facilities and for existing residences with the failing septic systems. Again, with that same language related to where replacements are constrained to within 100 feet of a critical area buffer. And we, I think, made only a minor change to the connection procedure, but just to remind you, remind you how this is supposed to work. We would plan to do an open call for connections in June of each year. Have applications submitted by July 31. We would evaluate and recommend the prioritization based on the, on the policy that you just saw and provide those for city council consideration in each of the years in the fall, September, October. Oh, I guess we did make one change. So part of the procedure would be, includes that unpaid connections would be redistributed. Connections remaining after 2028, which is the fourth year, would be distributed in subsequent years. And that each year, the city would consider the purchase of one extra ERU for an unspecified commercial use with an imminent emergency, and this was a council addition or development of an affordable unit. So if there was an affordable unit that was going to be developed, or there was an issue with the existing commercial unit, we could have that spare ERU to bypass the annual process and allow that connection. Denied applicants can reapply if they do not, if they aren't prioritized that year. And that is the majority of the changes. So as I mentioned, we are going to make a change and recommend that the city's program and not necessarily the Kitsap program be identified as the low-income program. But other than that, we would forward this resolution to you at a future meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Director Worsicki. Don't see any lights. Oh, okay, Councilmember Dietz, start us off.
Yeah, I think, well, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion. I moved a forward resolution number 202505 to the May 27th, 2025 Regular Business Meeting for Consideration of Adoption.
So, yeah.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Dietz, seconded by Councilmember Merwaki. Is there any more discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And I'm abstaining. Okay. With that, we will move, thank you, we will move on to the next.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item for you is a proposition that the council adopt this evening, a development agreement between the City of Bainbridge Island and the Low-Income Housing Institute, known as LEHI, for the development, operation, and maintenance of an affordable housing project, 625 Winslow Way East. This development agreement was the subject of an extensive presentation provided to you at your April 22nd council meeting. At that time, the council voted to move this to this meeting for consideration of adoption. I won't go over the extensive presentation that you did receive, but I want to remind you that the development agreement is a contract between the city and LEHI. The basic terms of the agreement is that the city will provide to LEHI approximately an acre site for a long-term lease between 75 and 99 years, which will be determined later on, subject to financing. In addition to that, the city is committing $3 million of its designated Affordable Housing Fund, not general fund, to LEHI. LEHI is committing to raising the financing, to developing, to constructing and operating then a, an affordable housing project targeted at 60% of the area meeting income for that determined time of 75 to 99 years. With this development, there is, in the attached to development agreement, a ground lease. And once the ground lease has been financed and is recorded, it will retire the development agreement. Basically, the development, again, is for the development of approximately 90 affordable housing units, 6% of area meeting income, some ground floor space, which also includes approximately 3,200 square feet of commercial space and other amenities such as parking, plaza, and utilities. LEHI will be required to develop a master development plan. That master development plan is anticipated to be presented to the council for review within three months after the execution of this development agreement. That is in addition to the normal development process, which LEHI, normal, meaning the city's standard development process, that the city will, LEHI will go through. This project does need some considerations that are appearing to mirror what some of the proposals are for comprehensive plan changes. But the floor area ratio moving from 1.40 to 2.46. The height is generally within the limits, but at 45 feet to the flat roof, 49 feet to the parapet, but it is on a warped plane, so it depends depending on how you measure it. And then also park, possible parking considerations, which staff hopes to bring back to the council for some policy direction on different methodologies that could be calculated for 100% exclusive affordable projects. LEHI is responsible for securing the financing, and they have three years within the development agreement to secure that financing. If financing is not secured within the three years, then the development agreement will expire, and I suppose will do further consideration. Approximately development cost in total is in the range of approximately $50 million. The development agreement also does allow for advancing of about, no greater than $1 million in pre-development costs of surveys, utility, capacity reports, architectural services, traffic studies, which would be advanced out of the city's commitment of $3 million to help the pre-development project. There is a tentative schedule attached to the development agreement showing an example. There was a comment previously made of that, how will we know that this project is maintained at 6% AMI and does not go less than that? I just want to quickly turn your attention to page two of the development agreement, which is page 353 of your agenda packet. The contract does require that the project shall contain approximately 90 multifamily dwelling units serving a mix of housing sizes, ages, and incomes based upon the needs of the community. All dwelling units will be affordable to households with incomes at or below 80% of the area meeting income. It also says that the average will be at 6% of Kitsap County AMI with intent to allow for the inclusion of some units up to 80%. That is within the development agreement. Also, then, the lease itself has similar language, and that is an attachment to the development agreement. And it also states that this is a mixed-unit development with incomes up to 80% of area meeting incomes, with an average not to exceed 6% of Kitsap County AMI. with incomes up to 80% of area meeting incomes with an average not to exceed 6% of Kitsap County AMI. So it is locked within the contract, which is a different situation than the reference to the city of Kenmore. As I understand, I do not have direct knowledge, but I just know what I've been told and what I read. The situation of the city of Kenmore was that a presentation was made to the city council to provide permanent supportive housing to move people out of homelessness, the very lowest incomes. The city council had agreed to that and said that they, and just as we are, a plan was put together to achieve that. When that became more publicly known, people became concerned with that level of income. But that wasn't necessarily a bait switch situation. That was more of a misunderstanding on the elected bodies' part of what they were agreeing to. In this particular case, I want you to be clear that's within the development agreement and the lease agreement that this is at 6% on average AMI. Now, if incomes can go up to 80% and we're at an average of 6%, then obviously there will be some at the other end of the average below 6%, but for the average of 6% AMI. This is the, the recommendation is for you to adopt the resolution. We have a representative of LEHI here again. I think he brought his parents with him and we have Bainbridge Island residents, but again, John Grant, I just want to give Mr. Grant the opportunity to chair
Yes.
to make any comments.
Yes, we'd love to hear from you. Go ahead. Yes. And hi, parents. How are you? Hi, neighbors. It doesn't change, does it?
City Manager Blair King, thank you for calling me out. And my parents did in fact truck down from Baker Hill to see us tonight. For the record, my name is John Grant. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer with the Low Income Housing Institute. And I will be very brief. I will just say that we are so appreciative of this council considering this proposition and this, this project, which is so important. We need affordable housing on Bainbridge Island. This is housing for cashiers at the Calico Cat, baristas at Blackbird Bakery, and teachers, some of the most talented teachers, I think, in the, in the region at Bainbridge Island High School, my alma mater. And so it's just such a pleasure and a delight for me to be able to address you all and see Bainbridge moving in the direction of being an inclusive community that's affordable for everyone. So thank you for your time today. Thank you to my parents for showing up and saying hi. Thank you, Mayor Matthews, City Manager King and the council. We appreciate your consideration.
Yeah. And finally, Mayor, I just want to point out that the competitive process was used to select LEHI. Solicitation was asked for affordable housing developers. We're very pleased. We had six very high quality firms respond. All the firms were high quality. There was a selection committee. LEHI was the recommendation. Council did go along with that recommendation. It will be a big lift to secure the financing. And we've already talked about the pieces here. We thought we had $5 billion, $50,000 available to us. The reason why we were very excited about that is it was not from the state's housing trust fund. It was a different pot of money. And we truly, well, we do anticipate that LEHI and we will work with them, will go back and secure funding from the housing trust fund. We'd also like to get it, we'd love to get it from that pot of transportation or a development pot as well. But they will have a big lift. They do have a reputation for being able to be very competitive in competitive grants. And with the low income housing tax credit program, which is the reason why they're selected. And the recommendation is to go ahead and adopt the resolution approving the development agreement. And then we'll look to the master plan. We'll come back to you for your review and approval. And then we anticipate some, some hard work on LEHI's part. We'll be behind him primarily being a cheerleader, but this project, you'll see the schedule that we would anticipate maybe commence construction a couple of years without occupancy and a couple of years after that.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Thank you so much for being here, John, and thanks to your parents for being here. Mine also live up Baker Hill, incidentally. So great. Wow. Well, thank you for being here. With that, I'm going to make the motion. I move to adopt resolution number 2025-10, approving a development agreement between the City and Low Income Housing Institute, LEHI, for the development, construction, operation and maintenance of an affordable housing project at 625 Winslow Way East.
Second.
Yeah. Great. The motion has been made by Mayor Matthews and seconded by Councilmember Marawaki. All those in
Discussion?
Oh, yeah, those discussion.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Just discussion. Councilmember Marawaki.
Thank you. This is an exciting thing. And what, what's really exciting for me is it meets a lot of different goals our city wants. You know, for decades, I've been saying the people who live here can't afford to work here. I said that back when I was on the Bainbridge Island Health, Housing and Human Services Council. And what I mean by that is the people who make the city run, 70% of our employees don't live here in the city. Same with the fire district, school district. And it's a multiple prong challenge because one, we want our businesses to thrive, but what I hear from many of them, including ones right out the street here, they just can't find help. Because they can't afford to drive here or the hours. A lot of them would like to stay open later, but their staff have to drive an hour and a half to get home. It, that doesn't really work. And so that would be really important for businesses and for the recruitment of personnel and others. It's also something that we really don't talk a lot about much, but it's socioeconomic diversity. You know, we're an aging island. We're 10 years over the average. That we've got to lower that average demographically. Plus, it just makes a more vibrant community and helps to add, and hopefully will help add to the school district's enrollment, so it could solve that. And then finally, I look at those line of cars every morning coming in and every evening going out. And a moving car, or better yet, a car that's not moving but parked, doesn't pollute as much as a car that's sitting there idling. And so if we can get tons of these people off of their commute, number one, they get hours of their lives back, and I'm sure they appreciate that. But we also have a green initiative. And so we, more of those cars we can take off the road, the better. So it meets a multiple prong of a lot of goals that this community cares about. So I think it's quite an exciting project.
You, Councilmember, Council Deputy Mayor Quinzel.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I second everything that my colleague, Mayor Smarawaki, has said. I'm, I'm very glad this is coming along. And I do think the efforts being made to diversify the tenancy, that's, that's something to count on. And it's a selling point for our community. And I understand that there are plans for a meeting in the not too distant future. That we'll, we'll publicize that widely and make sure that people who are interested, people who are committed, people who are in doubt about this can come together and, and learn a lot and meet one another around this big change in our landscape.
Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, everyone. And with that, we are on to our next agenda. Oh. Oh, we didn't vote. We didn't do the fun part. All those in favor? And none opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Now we'll go on to the next agenda item. Which is, we are, oh, Consider Ordinance 2025-7 relating to proposed design review changes for compliance with HB 1293.
So like some of the other, unlike the last item, but like other items tonight's agenda, this is an introduction for the council. No final action is required. Although upon the presentation, we are asking you to consider moving this forward to a subsequent meeting for adoption. Patty Charnas will discuss the recommendation to the council related to compliance with HB 1293. And she'll say, and I'll just say, is that this came to the council, the council directed that it be, that it be forwarded to the Design Review Commission to develop a scheme to respond. And they have done this. And the planning director will tell you what the proposal is.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, City Council. Patty Charnas, Planning and Community Development. It's a pleasure to be here and to introduce a substantial body of work that the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission, but especially the Design Review Board, worked for over a, a year on helping the city comply with the new state law on design review process. Next slide, please. So as you may recall, we came to you in February of 2024 regarding a couple of the over dozen amendments to the Growth Management Act, one on permit processing, review timelines, and the other on new requirements for the design review process for all cities and counties that do design review, either administratively or through a design review board. House Bill 1293 required that those cities and counties with design review programs ensure that the, a couple of big things, one, that the design guidelines be objective, measurable, easy to understand. And that also that design review board meetings only happen once. And so these were, these represented substantial deviations from the way the, the city was doing things. They take design review very seriously. We have a really nice manual that's referred to. And so before you tonight is an ordinance that implements the changes in municipal code. A clean version of the updates and revisions to the design for Bainbridge Manual, our design guidelines. A resolution that also addresses how the process for design review is handled through our administrative manual. So, so quite a bit of work. Next slide, please. The ordinance updates a couple of titles in the municipal code, principally Title II and Title 17. And I'll go over those in a little more detail. And then again, you have the design manual as well as a resolution in the manual, the administrative manual. All updated for your consideration for adoption at the next meeting. Next slide, please. So our ordinance, of course, modifies the number of design review meetings from three to one. That was a lot of work by our design review board. And I really just want to say how hard they worked over a long period of time, how much they cared, how much thought they put into this. It was not easy. And I also want to thank HB Harper, who, if she was still with the city, would be doing this presentation. Because while I, I didn't participate directly, she would report out on really just the, the level of effort and care that went into this big package before you. At the Design Review Board also gave some opportunity to look at how they did work and how they could provide as much value as possible. And to them, the division of land projects, subdivision projects, really isn't something that they felt that they were offering a lot of value for. So the modifications before you remove subdivision from the design review process. But importantly, one of the larger volumes of permits that the department processes are minor, minor site plan reviews. And those that occur in the Winslow subarea, the Design Review Board did want to become part of. So that is an important part of this package. And then when there's an applicant that wishes to depart from subdivision standards, rather than have that be handled administratively at the staff level, the Planning Commission requested that that be part of Planning Commission review. So that too is in front of you tonight. And then a lot of thought was given to the applicant being fully prepared and delivering complete submissions, and especially during public participation meetings, which are not just part of the design review process, but also part of the general permitting process. Next slide, please. So our, the design guidelines changes took a lot of time and effort. And I really, really appreciate so much of what they did. But it was hard to make design, which is somewhat intuitively a matter of subjectivity, more objective, more measurable and more easy to understand by our applicants. And the design, the Design Review Board did just that. It also found some things that were repeated throughout the manual. They reduced those. And they identified ways for them to become much more valuable in a process that is being a little more winnowed down by having just one meeting. So we've also updated the manual with more recent imagery. And again, the emphasis on having the applicant have much better, more, more substantial submittals. So that, that, that one meeting can really have a lot of, of decision-making happen in that one meeting occur. Next slide, please. So here are the chapters that you'll see those changes. They again worked long and hard on it. Next slide, please. And then importantly, there are two, the appendices to the design for Bainbridge Manual are relied upon. And you'll see the emphasis on how applicants are to submit complete, well-thought-out and somewhat even partially engineered designed projects for the Design Review Board and for the entire review process. This, of course, is key to getting the most out of the new procedure, new process before you. Next slide. So we have an administrative manual, like most jurisdictions do, that provide for staff as well as for our applicants to follow on how to submit permit applications. And when this needed to be updated with respect to the design review process. So you have before your resolution implementing those changes. Next slide. So again, we were before you all the way back in February of 2024. And that's a lot of time and effort that the Design Review Board put in for this. And then we have a, a package that even though the state law requires it to be in effect for all cities and counties, June 30th, you will get an ordinance that implements it the, the regular time after, to be effective after adoption. Thank you. Thank you, HB Harper, for all this hard work. Thank you to the Design Review Board and for the Planning Commission for the deep thought and work that they did on this package.
Thank you, Director Charnas. Councilmember Marawaki.
Thank you, Mayor Matthews, and thanks for the great presentation. And I was the council liaison to the Design Review Board for my first two years. And it's an exceptional bunch of individuals, very proficient, very detail-oriented. And the design for Bainbridge Manual that had been created, it's a remarkable piece of work with just really clear objectives and goals that anybody can understand. For someone who hates jargon and all those things, this is probably one of the better review documents from a government I've seen in quite a while. I really appreciate that they've worked hard to make it one meeting. They cared so much about it before. They would have repeat meetings to ask the applicant to, well, could you please redesign that roof to be more historic or something like that? Just because they cared about the character of our community. So I think this is a really good proposal. And I would just want to shout out to those members of that this last year. I know who you are. Thank you guys for all your hard work on this. I know, I can just see the differences. I can see all the changes you made. So this is a really good example of, we were just talking about volunteers. This is a perfect example of when you have great volunteers helping your city. So, yeah, thanks very much.
Councilor Schager.
Thank you, Mayor. So I totally understand the, the importance of this and the, and the reasons for the legislature doing this. I also served for, I don't know, maybe a couple of years on the Design Review Board as a liaison. And, you know, it was super fun being in those meetings and, and getting to see projects in their infancy, right? My question is, how are we generally, I don't know who we is at the moment, how are we going to be sure that there is a level of professionalism and preparedness by the applicants coming into that one and only meeting? Because that's the only chance that the Design Review Board members have. And if it's not done well, and you know, and I saw both kinds, you know, I saw I saw presentations that wowed everybody and I saw some where they're just kind of scratching their heads going, so did you read the instructions? Anyway, so that's my question. And I think that if, if that is done in good faith, you know, this, this has a good chance of, of really working out well for all, all concerned.
I'll let the planning director answer that, but I will say that this is not an unusual process. unusual process in terms of going before the design review at one meeting, but it does put additional pressure on staff to make sure that the applicants are prepared to make their presentation. But all we've got.
The updates to the appendices that I mentioned briefly are where more detail and more direction is given to what constitutes an acceptable submittal. Importantly, so do the clarifications to the administrative manual. They're more clear and read like a recipe book. So we believe it's going to mean better submittals. However, later on in your agenda tonight, there is a consideration that the Planning Commission has put forth to work on just that for public participation meetings, so that there's standardization and, of course, better information.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to respond to what Councilmember Schneider, the question she was raising, because we did talk about it in those meetings. And there was concern that the Design Review Board would have less time with bringing a good project forward, making it better. That is, that is concerning to me, because they have been very creative discussions in many instances I've been aware of, because I was liaison from the Planning Commission before and during and after the creation of the Design for Bainbridge Manual. It brought us along a long ways. But I came around feeling that the quality of thought and imagination that went into this revision really does make it better, and makes the, makes the process of evaluation both more efficient and more potentially precise and thoughtful. And as the City Manager said, it puts pressure on staff. It makes the pre-op meeting more important. And I think it was Todd Thiel, the Chair of the Committee, who said, we will make that meeting, that one meeting, really count. And a project that isn't passing muster for us will just get be turned down. And the applicant can come back with a different project or a decisively revised project, but it's got to be good enough at the outset. And that depends a lot on the staff working with an applicant who isn't already attuned to what we need. And staff can say, what you have here isn't going to pass muster. And people who aren't, aren't prepared to present convincingly, they're going to be, they're going to leave unhappy. But it is a necessary, precise decision. If there's, if there are objective standards, there's an objective decision. It's not just, we don't like this. So I do think quality control is going to be preserved. I can think of a big project that should have been turned down at the start. There was a struggle and a struggle and a struggle, and all sorts of people made efforts to be improve something that was just not right. And we have it, we have it to work with it, and there are assets, but things could have been better in various instances. So that's what I think we're, we've moved in the right direction with this, in my opinion.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Okay, let's wrap this one up. Councilmember Dietz.
Happy to do so. And I just wanted to acknowledge the work that Director Charnas and staff have done on this and the Design Review Board. I move to place approval of Ordinance 2025-07 and Resolution 2025-06 relating to the proposed design review changes for compliance with HB 1293 on the next City Council meeting for adoption.
Second.
Great. Motion made by Councilmember Dietz, seconded by Deputy Mayor Quitzland. Is there any, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you so much for all of your work on this. Okay, next, we are on to the next, which is introducing Resolution 2025-09, amending the Code of Contact and Ethics Program.
Yes, Mayor. Also, this is an item that's not taking final action tonight, but the recommendation is for you to consider it to move forward to a subsequent agenda for final action. This is something the council directed back in November based upon of 2024, based upon the work plan of the Ethics Board. The Ethics Board had proposed that several changes be made to the program. The council directed that staff draft changes. The changes are basically these, that the Ethics Board may provide advisory opinions to the City Manager at the manager's request at this point in time. If I were to request an advisory opinion, the Ethics Board is not broad enough to allow for that. This would make that change. Also, the changes proposed is it would establish a time limit of 12 months from a complaint, that a complaint must be received within a year of the action subject of the complaint and the individual that is, receives the complaint or the complaint's made against must either be a current council member or a member of a commission or have left that position within 12 months for the complaint to be considered. Also, that ethics training be mandatory for City Council Advisory Boards and the City Council, and that there be additional posting requirements, for example, that staff would provide public with access to the training materials by posting them on the Ethics webpage, and the annual report of Ethics Board also be posted on the webpage. In addition to that, there was a housekeeping item to remove a reference to a training pamphlet since the training pamphlets are no longer created or distributed. That is the presentation. It's pretty straightforward. It is a part of the Ethics Commission work plan, and you're asked to consider this. And again, moving forward to the May 27 agenda for adoption.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Dietz.
Yes, I was just going to make the motion. I move to forward Resolution 2025-09 to the May 27, 2025 agenda.
I'll second with just a tiny typo in the summary. I know it's nitpicky, but it's weird sounding. That says must be a current council member of, member of a commission. I think you mean or there.
Oh, yes.
Just for clarity.
You're right. Motion made by Councilmember Dietz, seconded by Councilmember Marwaki. All of those are, all of those in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey. Any opposed? None? Okay, that passes. Next is, okay, this is a good one. Consider a request to extend the terms of Planning Commissioners, Dynas, Sullivan, and Shab through the end of the comprehensive plan update. We, so a council, or Deputy Mayor Quitzland, in the beginning of our meeting spoke about his going to the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board meeting, and we are one of 20 cities who have yet to submit their plans. They're coming, this great group of planning commissioners is working on it. They have been working very hard and very well together for many years. They're all trusted members of our city volunteer family. We have all interviewed them multiple times, some of them, and really, really think that them continuing to do their work is what's best for the city at this time. And so with that, a third.
So to, you can, so, let me back up. I hate to repeat, but again, this is the, via Councilwoman Quitzland, the Planning Commission requests the terms of three of the commissioners be extended. During the application process, all three commissioners submitted applications asked for reappointment. The municipal code establishes a selection committee to review the appointments, but it is noted that for Planning Commission, it's actually the mayor who makes the recommendation, the full City Council, based upon the recommendation, the selection committee. The selection committee was convened, did consider the applications, did forward that to the mayor, and the mayor is making the recommendation to concur with her recommendation to appoint the three members to continue service to the Planning Commission.
Yes. Council, Deputy Mayor Quitzland.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to begin by saying there were two other applicants at this time, and I think they are people who should be, should be advised to reapply at a time when there are vacancies on the council, on the, on the, the Planning Commission. We don't know at this point whether the three people we are going to vote on tonight will serve for a full term or for a portion of a term to the end of our crisis. We will see. And we do expect that one member of the Planning Commission may run for another office and be creating a vacancy there. So there are many things happening, and it's great to see new people coming forward to serve on this important commission with, with credentials and commitment. And so it's, it's great. I will, I will begin the nomination or the, the motion process. I move to confirm the recommended appointment, reappointment of Peter Shab to the Planning Commission, position five, to a term that ends June 2028.
Second. Okay, that was made by Deputy Mayor Quitzland, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move, I move to confirm the recommended reappointment of Sean Sullivan to the Planning Commission, position six, to a term that ends June 2028.
Second. Motion made by Deputy Mayor Quitzland, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I move to confirm the recommended reappointment of Benjamin Dynas to the Planning Commission, position seven, to a term that ends June 2028.
I'll second. Deputy, motion made by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Schneider. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, everyone. And thank you, Commissioners, for committing to follow, to committing to finishing this process, and you are appreciated. And to the two others, I know Matt and Kelly, I'm not sure about Designer Eword, but I also think there are vacancies there, right?
Possibly, possibly.
Okay, so we'll, we'll figure that out. All right. And next on our agenda is, we are going to adopt, or, okay, yeah, confirm the appointment of Deputy Mayor Quitzland to represent the City of Bainbridge Island on the Kitsap Service Grant Recommendation Committee. And we have Councilmember Marwaki with a.
I move to appoint Deputy Mayor Quitzland to represent the City of Bainbridge Island on the Kitsap Service Grant Recommendation Committee.
Great. Motion made by Councilmember Marwaki, seconded by Councilmember Dietz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your service. They are really excited about having you.
Well, I, I learned a lot, and I felt it was service well, well done first time around. And the more you know, the better you can do it. It is, and this will be my last shot, but I can, I can manage it. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Okay, and then we have two communications. The first is receive recommendation from the Planning Commission to amend resolution for public, it's just a discuss to a discuss?
No, Mayor, this item, again, no actions required. This is keeping with the council's stated policy to advance actions from the Planning Commission for, to the council, for the council's information and situational awareness.
Okay. Okay, so we are aware. Okay, and then the next is.
The second is requests, the next item we have is a request for action, and that is Councilmember Schneider is asking that the council place on a future agenda the establishment of a mobility advisory committee.
Okay. All right. So anyone, okay, do we just have a motion? All, all those in favor of putting this on a future agenda? Oh, sorry.
Do you want to add? Discuss?
Do we have any discussion, or do you?
Or just, or just make the motion?
Do you want to pitch it, or just make the motion?
Sure. Can we have this on a future agenda for discussion? Yeah, for starting up again a mobility advisory committee.
I'll second.
Okay.
And on discussion, I just hope that, I don't know when, but when our, when our calendar gets clear, so we're not so busy on, you know, trying to get the compact passed and all the rest. I mean, I want to hear it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Schneider and seconded by Councilmember Marwaki. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That passes unanimously, and I believe that is it, and we are adjourned.
Hey. Oh, sorry. I shouldn't celebrate.